All right, we're gonna get started again. Next item on our agenda is budget guidance. And Kelly, I'm not sure if you have somebody that wants to come up or if you're handling this.
I read some of the comments on budget growing over the years. And so Raj did a little analysis on that to help you all see how it had grown, where it had grown. So he sent us a spreadsheet to Lauren, so she's opening it up. I'll let him talk about that. And that wasn't really part of his plan, but since he brought it up, and I think it'd be good for you to see how much it's grown and where it's grown, what areas, because he did it by function. So, well, we'll take a look at that. And then, I guess, you know, just, we would like some reflection from you all on things that you want to see in the budget, things that you don't want to see in the budget, you know, where are we falling on the tax rate now that you've seen kind of what is generally going on with the counties portion of the budget? You know, obviously, we haven't got the schools yet, so that's still kind of outstanding, but, you know, just some general direction so we know how to continue building this budget for you. So.
All right, we may need to... There's a lot more columns there.
Yeah, we're missing a few. We're trying to make it easier, okay? Did you send it to Vanessa P D F or?
No, it's just a spreadsheet.
Okay, yeah.
All right.
Okay, is all of it?
Um, yeah, I think that that should... Can you go up? All right, so what this is showing you is our beginning budgets for each of the years, 2020, 2021 through 2025, and I've broken it down by function. And it's combining the C I F fund and the general fund. Back in 2020, the C I F fund was not created, so everything was showing up in the general fund. Since then, it's been split up, but both of those make up the general fund as you look at it from a financial standpoint. So if you look at 2020, our overall budget was 275 million. In 2025, it's 411 million. The only piece that's missing from there is there's a transfer between the C I F fund, between the general fund and C I F fund. And so I've eliminated the transfer. This way, we're not showing duplicate numbers in both funds, because the transfer gets reflected in the C I F fund also as an expenditure item, revenue and expenditure item. These are just the expenditure sides of it. And it's broken out by function. Can you go up? Go down a little bit, sorry. Yeah. So the overall change has been $135 million between 2020 and 2025. And this, these are the functional areas. So the bottom part shows you the change from one year to the next in each of the functions. So if you look at the line 20 there, general fund, we had an $11.5 million change between the 2020 year and the 2025 year. The biggest areas that had change, public safety, the 44 million, the line below that. The education budget had a $29 million change. Above that is human services with $24 million. But those are the areas with substantial changes. I don't know if that helps to see where the money went.
We just kind of wanted to help you all see that in this format, because I think sometimes when numbers have been shown, they've been including other funds, not just the general fund, the general fund comparison. So that's what this is. So it was just kind of a informational thing. Raj and I were just discussing it, and felt like it was, we wanted to see what that looked like. So this is apples to apples, I guess, comparison. So that was just for y'all to see.
So public safety was the highest, as it should be.
Yeah.
They deserve it. But as far as D S S or human services, how much of that, and education, how much of that are we mandated to? Like, what does that include? Because a lot of that stuff, like, we have to have a certain number of D S S employees that do, and schools we have to fund. So how much of that are we being forced? Like, we don't really have a choice, we just have to do it. And how much?
Almost 80%. I'm gonna look at Suzanne to chime in if I speak on anything. But about 80% of our programs are mandated services. There's only a handful that are not mandated, like the nutrition programs are not mandated. Transportation is included in that. It's not part of social services, but it's under the bucket of human services. And a lot of that is funded by federal grants, the transportation program, like the Medicaid trips, things of that nature. But a lot, a large portion of it, an overwhelming portion of it is mandated functions. And the jump that you see is related to Medicaid expansion.
And I only ask because we hear a lot of, that's a lot of money, or we hear wasteful spending, but when you see 24, 24 million, that's a lot. But if we're mandated to do that, I mean, that's, we're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place, because that's what we have to do.
And then, and then, again, the counter to that is too, is that a large part of those mandated services, we do receive that reimbursement.
We're just looking at the expenditure side of it right now, so.
Right. So, anyway, we just wanted to show you that so that you all would have a good idea of where the money actually goes and what has gone up. So that is a good, I think, way of viewing it, to see how it actually played out. So from there, I guess, you know, just want to get from you all some instruction so that we can continue building the budget. Based on what you've heard and seen the past two days, would love some feedback on property tax rate, things you want in, things you want out, those kind of things.
I think I'm comfortable with everything I have seen. Now, maybe once I go home and think about it, it may change or I think differently. I do think that the fees that we went over with Suzie and Matt and Jason.
Jacob.
Was it Jacob?
Jacob.
Jacob, okay. I do think that we probably all need to take some time to think about that and absorb that. That's my opinion on that one.
Just generally speaking, there are things we need to prioritize, and I think, you know, of course, law enforcement, public safety, those things, those kind of things should be top of the list. Education, D S S, all that has to be done. A lot of other things. But I think we need to go through and evaluate and fund actual government responsibilities and give not one penny to things that are not government entities and not government responsibilities. I've already said, I want no funding for the E D C. Whatever else we can find in that budget that is not a government function needs to come out of the budget. I fussed the whole time I was in Raleigh, because they said we have, they have, you know, required to have a balanced budget. And they defined that as not spending more than they took in. Well, that's fine, but when you have all that debt, I mean, my personal finances, if I have any debt, I don't have a balanced budget. So I think we need to divert some of the money that we've been spending on things that are not government responsibilities toward paying down the debt and making sure our people are taken care of, not things that are, as I say, non-government entities.
I'm adamantly opposed to completely defunding economic development, because as it's been stated, they do a wealth for small business as well. I think what we were looking at was a cut of 250,000, I think, is what I remember correctly seeing. That still allows them to be able to focus on workforce development, helping the kids as far as entering into the workforce. It's not, I understand it's not providing incentives for people to, to come here and businesses to relocate here, but if we completely defund that, then we're also gonna lose the over there at the flywheel, where they are helping small businesses with business plans, entrepreneurship. There are some functions that are very useful for that. And, I mean, 250,000, I think, is what they lost? Is that, or is that?
That was what we.
That's the reduction.
I mean, I think that's, that's fair. Allow them to focus on small business for a while and what they can do for the small business community in Cabarrus County compared to bringing in larger corporations, but at least at the same time, you're not completely defunding them. To me, I don't want to see them defunded. I know it's wildly unpopular, but if we were to raise the tax rate, I just want to put out there the numbers. If we were to go, right now, it's .576. So if you were to go to .586, that gives the county 4.7 million extra dollars. For a median house at $356,000 is what that's valued at, they would pay 10 cents a month, or 10 cents a day extra, which would be $2.97 extra a month, for a yearly total of 35 extra dollars, but it provides 4.7 million extra for the county. So I just wanted to put the number out there. I'm well aware of how this board feels, but I think also, in the name of transparency, we should put that out there, that, hey, this is, if we were to raise it, this is what it's gonna be. If we weren't, and, you know, for that same, that same scenario, a $400,000 house, they would pay 11 cents a day, a $450,000 house, 12 cents a day. So there, there's, there are options. It requires raising the tax rate, which, again, I know exactly where, where we stand on that, but I did at least want to put those numbers out, that, that's where that is. And that's, that's, and I would agree that I would like to study the numbers with all those fees, because that, that's a lot to take in. Also, there were quite a few that we, I think, probably want to keep, like, like the foster kids. There's some of those that we should probably keep or possibly eliminate.
Thanks for reminding me of something else I meant to say. I'm sure you didn't want to do that, but. I know we can't nullify the revaluation that was done last year. If I could, I would. It was totally insane. We can reduce the tax rate. We're not gonna probably agree on a reduction that I would prefer. Have to be somewhere in between, I guess. But I do recall that when Robert Freeman was chairman of the commission, they went from 72 percent, or 72 cents on to 153, and they got a lot of stuff done. The jail, you know, some other major building things they had to do, on 53 cents. I'd like to see it go to, at least down to revenue neutral. And we're probably not gonna do that, but that's where I would like to go. And so I hope we can find some kind of reasonable compromise in between where we are and, what, revenue neutral be 50, something, 50 cents and?
52.65.
52.65. Well, I'd like to see it get back down to 53 or lower. That's just how I feel about it. I understand we're gonna have to negotiate, but we do need to come down, because people need some relief from these high property taxes. It's, you know, we just need to be more responsible to our taxpayers, citizens, and I will not vote for any incentives, because to me, that's extortion of our taxpayers on behalf of the big business special interests. And I'm just, we're not gonna go along with that.
So where would we find, if we drop it to 52, where are we going to find the extra $20 million at? Because staffs already work incredibly hard to shave the, what, seven, was it 7 million we were, so, and anything, anything under that gets incredibly painful. So where would we find the extra 20 million to get it down to that rate?
Well, that's why I said, I know we're not gonna get there, I just wish we could.
I don't know outside of a large number of positions that we would be able to get there, because, I mean, there might be a few other things that we could cut before we got to people, but, you know, our debt obligation is what it is, and if you, you could theoretically take money out of there, but that means there's absolutely no money for future debt, so no money for Northwest or the Midland High School or, you know, any of their needs outside of, you know, we, we still have this whole unusual situation where we have theoretically funded a school in our budget, but we don't have the funds for it. So, you know, we have some of those issues still out there, but, yeah, my quick math is telling me that's like $23 million. And if you took every vacant position out there, and these are ones that are, like, churning, because there's some that are, you know, like, are in process, that's only 9.9 million. So, yeah, you're, you're talking about a lot more than that.
And we don't even have a hard number for the school yet.
Well, and I, I think we need to cut out things like promotional items. We're not a business. We don't have to have promotional items. We need to cut that out completely. I mean, I'm, I'm sure we can find a lot of cuts. It may not get us where I'd like to be, but I think we can cut a lot of stuff out before we get to the point of hurting our employees. And like I say, you're not gonna get where I'd like to be, but I would like to move it lower, because people are hurting with these high property taxes, and we need to put a stop to that.
Well, so I, I was kind of thinking maybe somewhere in between where you guys were going with it. So most of the present, or the presentation that we have right now is based on what the current tax rate is. Maybe we can't get it down to revenue neutral, which, I, I understand that at this point. But, you know, Chris, sorry, Commissioner Meesmer, has said multiple times about two pennies. Like, what if we could move it down two pennies? So I guess, maybe, could we see what that would look like amount-wise? I mean, I understand that that's probably gonna equate to about $10 million, right?
Yes, over $10 million. So I'm gonna need a little instruction with that, because, so far, we've said we don't want to lose any people. I can, I mean, we can look around a little bit, but I'm gonna need some guidance. If we, I guess, maybe, maybe one direction we go with this is, if you cut this this year, keep in mind, can you pull the presentation with Raj's projections? So right now, with a 57.6 tax rate, next year, assuming all of these other factors stay in line, we were looking at over 11 million?
18 million.
18 million. So if you cut the tax rate this year, that impact goes all the way out on that chart. So now, next year, you will have to turn around and find $30 million or maybe a little more, depending on how that compounds. So you've got 18 you gotta find next year. So then, you're looking at potentially 28 to 30 million next year that you would have to find, and that becomes even harder. And so you just need to keep in mind that whatever you do this year has those impacts moving out into the future years. And so, you know, there's also, in 28 or 26, it, I guess, that, that's another question I have, is the last instruction I thought I heard was that we would not go out for debt except G O. So if, even if we went out for G O debt, it doesn't change the interest rate enough to get us much more, so we've got estimated $100 million out there right now in debt capacity, which is not enough to build Northwest High School. We still have two elementary schools, you might be able to bite those off, but does it solve the Northwest problem? Does it solve the Midland problem at some point? It doesn't. So there are some bigger issues. If you take money from there, you're crashing that ability to carry anything. And I don't even know how far we can go and not, you know, still meet our debt obligations that we already have. So we haven't explored that at all, because we were trying to maintain some debt capacity, because we assume that you're going to have to meet some school standards, whether you do anything for us at the county or any other of our normal obligations. We assumed that you wanted to keep some school capacity in there. So those are the things that we need to be thinking about in this process. If you, if you cut yourselves this year, next year, you're in a worse place to find a lot of money. And then, in 2028, that goes up to potentially $50 million. And again, this depends on growth, because remember, we adjusted those growth numbers. You know, there's, there are some assumptions in this, but again, and we did do conservative assumptions, because we want to underestimate our revenues and overestimate our costs, so we're not in the opposite position. We don't want to end up where we don't have enough money for what we planned. But that, that's something you really need to think deeply about, is, because you're gonna have to deal with it in the next year if we don't deal with it in this year.
Well, and I'm very aware, this stuff's not simple, okay? You can't just snap your fingers and have it exactly like I'd like it to be. But cutting out the incentives and extraneous things that we don't need to be doing is why I got elected, you know, in law. People elected us because they wanted this stuff cut out, they wanted the taxes lowered. That's what we said we would try to do, that's why they elected us, so I can't back down from that.
Understood. And, you know, even if you don't approve another incentive today, we have agreements out there that we are obligated to meet. And so, I mean, you cannot approve another one, and that's fine, but it doesn't change this scenario at this point. It only would make the scenario a little different, I guess, in how it played out, because, again, you get into a lot of issues about how much an incentive is, when does it come online, how long is it, you know, so there's, it would just factor in, you know, however it factored in, but it does, the fact that you don't want to do it anymore is all fine, but it doesn't change this scenario for you as far as what we have obligated already.
Oh, I understand that. We're, we're in a mess, as far as I'm concerned, with that. But when you weigh 200 pounds, you don't need to add another 100, you know?
Yes, understood.
So I just, I feel like we gotta take things in a better direction that's more responsible to our citizens and giving taxpayer funding to things that are not government entities, being basically blackmailed by businesses saying, "Not coming in if you don't give me this money," is, to me, not responsible government.
And I think what, you know, finding that balance, I mean, talking about the incentive grants, since Cabarrus County has not been given any incentive grants, we haven't been approached since then, City of Concord's still been given some, the companies are still coming here anyway. So, you know, that, that whole idea, you know, of that they're only coming here because of incentive grant, I think that's been dispelled. We've seen, like I said, we've seen companies coming here without Cabarrus County's portion. So, you know, we all, you guys were in your election last year, we were on this board. I didn't vote for the budget last year. Commissioner Wortman did. I mean, it was, there was a huge tax increase for the citizens, and we have heard, you guys heard it in your campaign, we heard it, you know, both of us heard it, whether we, you voted for it, I voted against it, we both still, you know, heard it. There are people out there hurting, and, you know, we have to, to look at those things. I mean, the direction we had given, Kelly, is we don't want employees cut, don't want services cut. And so, you know, and, and I still feel that way. But, you know, that's for me, that I still feel that way, and I don't think that really anybody at this table feel, felt that there should be layoffs or anything of that nature. So, you know, we, we just have to find that balance. I mean, it's, I know it's not easy, and, I mean, this is, we're not making the decision today in this room of what we're doing. I mean, I know you need direction, but we're, we're gonna have the opportunity to have many more conversations about this at commissioner meetings, we have another special budget meeting. So we're each gonna have individual conversations about how each other feels and, you know, what, you know, what we want to see happen. So I don't want anybody to feel like there, there's a decision being made today, but.
No, I just wanted everybody to understand next steps and impacts, and, you know, so as we continue to build this budget, you know, we need to understand kind of where you're going. What has happened before and is not ideal is when, when we come into a budget meeting in June and with a new idea about what we want to do, because it does change the picture. And, you know, if it's not discussed and well thought out ahead of time, you know, it may be disjointed and may cause things in the budget unintended consequences, I guess is, you know, the best way to put it. So making sure that we understand ahead of time so that we can meet the expectations and that we present you a budget that makes sense and doesn't have any of those lost pieces because something came up at the last minute. You know, I mean, obviously, you have the right to do that, but it is better for everybody if we can get as much of that information and handle it ahead of time to make sure that we don't lose any pieces on our side trying to translate that.
Well, we're not gonna make it perfect overnight, I know that. I just hope we can get started. If we don't go ahead and start moving away from some of these things that we shouldn't have been doing all this time, we're never gonna get out of it. It's gonna take a while to get out of it because of what's already in place, but we need to get started down that road in the opposite direction.
If, if we get to the point where we have to eliminate positions, would this board be willing to set the example and eliminate our salaries and do it for free? Is that something this board would consider?
Well, as you, as you know, I don't charge the county for any of my travel, hotels, transportation. I don't do any of that. I have not done that since I've been on that board. I know you have, so.
I'm talking about that every, every two weeks that we get paid. If we have to eliminate.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
I'm just asking, can we consider that?
And for the record, if, yeah.
If we have to cut positions.
And for the, well, whenever, you gotta be careful whenever you say "cut positions," because is it positions that have not been filled that, like Kelly's identified, some that could potentially go away? That's not cutting jobs out or cutting person. I have no problem with that. I mean, you know, we don't have to get paid at all, but, you know, this is truly a public service. I think there was some misinformation the other evening that we were making $85,000 a year. Well, I don't know, I think we get a little over $1,000 a month, and I have literally been spending 70 hours a week on this job, and that's fine, I'll give up $1,000 a month, I don't, you know, I don't care. But, and, and I've been neglecting my business to do this. So, you know, if you want to push it in that direction, you know, that, that's fine, I don't care, I don't need the $1,000 a month, that's fine.
And I understand, and I'm just saying, I think if we get to that point to lead it by example, I don't even know if we can legally do it for free. I don't know if there's a requirement.
But we've already, we've already addressed this by saying that we're not going to cut jobs and we're not going to cut services. So it's already been addressed.
But if we're going to cut $10 million and we've already done pretty much everything we can to hit the seven, there's only so much you can keep cutting before we get into benefits people, and there's only so much we can keep cutting until we get there. That's why I just want to throw it out.
Well, that's what-
And to be clear, the vacancies that we do have right now, a good portion of those are public safety. As the sheriff has been trying to fill positions, you know, we are finally starting to catch up from the effects of the market study that we did and the improvements in their salaries. So a good portion of what's out there is public safety. So, you know, just letting you all know what's out there, so what could potentially be impacted if we try to eliminate vacant positions, it's going to have a heavy impact on them.
Well, and I don't, I don't think we've given that direction.
Yeah, just-
I have it, you know, so. So I feel like we're having a conversation about something that's irrelevant at this point, but.
Yeah. Well, it's just kind of giving you a framework of $10 million, what that looks like.
Well, I certainly don't want anybody fired that's doing their job. If you've got anybody that's goldbricking and not being honest about doing their job, that's a different matter. But anybody that's doing their job what they ought to be doing, I certainly don't want to have to let them go. As far as cutting our salary, you can cut mine if you want to. I mean, it wasn't my idea to run for this office in the first place, and I'd have been doing without that income if I hadn't run. So if you want to cut it back, I'll live without that, you know? It's just people that did urge me to run and supported me, expected me to do something about this, so I'm trying.
Any other comments?
Nope.
Okay. All right. Well, Kelly, do you have any other comments or?
No, just we'll continue poking around. We've got our individual department budget meetings, although I promise you, we're not funding $10 million in those, but we will see what we can find, see how much more savings we can produce out of those and kind of go from there.
When you meet, when you meet with each department head and you kind of go through that, I know that you guys do a good job of making sure with the receipts and all of that with money. Has there been, since y'all haven't met yet, I assume that when you do meet, it's going to be some direction of like, give us, you know, some areas where you think as a department that you can cut back?
Yeah. Well, before they even submitted the budget, we made it clear we needed them to be trim tight because we already knew we were in a hole. You know, we can go back again and see, you know, I mean, if I can get a million dollars out of, you know, because they are run, departments are run very lean, and some of them, depending, they vary. Some departments, like finance, they don't have anything except people and paper, you know, so there's not really anything to squeeze out of them, you know? Now, some have purchased services of some sort, you know, we go through those and are those things that we have to have. Some of them are, some of them maybe we could do without. I don't know. But it's not that this hasn't been gone through over the years, so we do this annually. So we will be, you know, again, comparing it against previous expenses, you know, those line items where those type of things are in there, they have to explain those. So if they have $5,000 in travel, they're telling us what those travel items are. If they have purchased services, they're telling us what those are. If there's, like, certain budgets may have membership to the COG, things like that that are a greater use than just that department, but that's where it's housed. You know, things like that, that we just have to go through and see what it is that are in those line items, but, you know, we will do that, we will go through them again and review all of that and make sure as we're going through, because those are, we literally put the budget on the screen and go line by line and talk about why is this different? If it's more, you know, they explain that to us. So I guess a good example of one that will be going up, we talked about it a little bit, was, it was time for EMS to buy some required medical equipment, you know, that they have to buy every five years, I think it is. So that will go up. We know that that's going up, and they've already talked to us about that. So, you know, we'll go over that and say, yep, we talked about that. And, you know, kind of, that's how it's done. So that's how we go through it and have those discussions. But it is a very detailed discussion. Those meetings usually take, depending on how big the department is or how big the budget is, it can take anywhere from 30 minutes to three hours.
And to Larry's point about, you know, just the Cabarrus County merchandise and that kind of stuff, do we, do we bid, like send those out for bid if we're going to have something printed or done? Or do we just use the same companies that we've always contracted with? Like, how does, I think people just want to understand, like, how that process works? And then how do you decide what company to go with?
Yeah, so it depends on how much of volume of something you're buying. You know, a certain point, you've got to bid it that's required. If we don't, we've got, I think, 15-ish different companies that we use, whether it's t-shirts, printed materials, things that we hand out at the fair, you know, those type of things. So there's different companies that do that. And depending on what that item is, if we have gotten good quality from one or bad quality from one on a certain thing, we might go to a different company for this or a different company for that. But we do, you know, get pricing, you know, we check and make sure that, you know, that we think that's the best pricing on that particular product. And, you know, some of that's very informal, but yes, that is an expectation. And for, when you have to actually do a PO for it, you have to provide that information showing that you have checked prices in at least three places.
Anything else?
I just want to clarify, I'm not saying no more business is coming in here. I'm just saying they do it on their own dime instead of our taxpayers being extorted to pay them to come.
All right. Well, that's all we have on the agenda today. We do not need the closed session, so, yeah. So we will, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Amen.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Thank you for everyone being here, stayed all day.